Good evening, and we apologize for being a little bit late here. We had an executive session that went overtime. I'm calling this meeting of the Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency to order. The meeting is June 9th, 2014. Roll call, please.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Egleton.
Here.
Gary Yellingson.
Here.
Chester Norikas.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
And Henry Quan.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is comments from citizens present. Are there any citizens that would like to speak to us? Seeing none, I think we'll proceed. The minutes of the meeting of May 12th, 2014. Are there any corrections or additions?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Allison, could you for me, please? In the -- I don't have my -- in front of me. I haven't had a chance to pull it in yet. But third page of the minutes.
You were going to bring us information regarding a contract and an intergovernmental agreement?
Yes. We should have that for the next meeting on the 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other corrections or additions? I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Agreed.
Sir, second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion's carried. Item E, the fourth item, is Special Order of Business and Presentations. First one is Nikki Price and the Cultural Center.
Hello. I brought with me also the President of the Board, John Collier. And we'd like to talk about the annual report for fiscal 2013. I included it in your packet. Would anyone like a paper copy to refer to at this point? Okay, wonderful. So I know you have a long meeting ahead of you. We'll hit the high points here, and we'll be able to answer any questions that you might have. So thanks a lot for having us here. This is our annual review. You ask us to come back once a year throughout our three-year agreement and the lease that we updated last year. And we're here to offer you what's happened in the last year, review of finances up until this point, projects and upgrades, also what we've achieved programming and organizational-wise, and also the outlook for the coming year. Since you have that annual report, pardon me, in front of you, I won't burden you with the expenses and income of fiscal 2013. This is the second year in a row that we've had those numbers reviewed by Grimstad and Associates. And we're really proud of them, and we feel like we're adhering to the standard accounting procedures and that all of our finances are available, transparent for your review there. What I would like to show you, though, is the growth of our organization over the last three years. You can see that we've seen some healthy growth in grants and donations and memberships, and that our rental income has held fairly steady. Last year when we were here, we talked about comparing or gauging our progress based on our strategic plan. And I have to -- I can tell you that in these three first categories, we are performing to the strategic plan, seeing between 10% and 15% growth in those categories. Clearly, grants are a larger percentage, but those tend to, you know, go up and down based on your capital projects, as we'll get more of that later. Rental income has held fairly steady. We have changed a few categories about what classifies as rental income. That accounts for a little bit of it, but clearly we have a lot more growth that we could see in rental income. So our balance sheet as of today has an operations reserve of $45,000. We have $24,000 in our restricted funds, and those are grants that are designated for projects and have yet to be spent. And then our board restricted fund is $50,000, and that is the Chessman gift that's being held aside for special purpose in accordance with the Chessman family wishes. We continue to see really good support from our lodging partners. This is a list of the hotels and individuals that have provided rooms to us free of charge to help make our performances possible. Most of them are hotels, but some of them are also private individuals who often offer vacation rentals and studio apartments for our use. Makes our performances possible. We also have a whole slew of business donors who provide us with cash donations as well as product donations. For example, Cape Falweather Coffee Roasters provides all the coffee that we serve at the Cultural Center free of charge to us. So the information center and in all our events and for our groups and our rentals, we serve Cape Falweather coffee. And Mojo Coffee and Pyro Coffee both provide little certificates for our membership renewals. Every name here and a whole lot more that you'll find in the annual report, those are all businesses that support the Cultural Center. Our membership as of today is 367, and at this time last year, it was 346. We have a core of members, people who come back year after year. I estimate that core at about 315. And then we have people who seem to come and go based on their needs at the time. So we just look to keep that core growing and growing. Okay, so in the past year, we have completed one major project, the roof. When I was here last year, we talked about how this roof needed to be replaced, and it needed to be done at any cost because we were leaking inside. So we decided to separate that into three separate parts so that we could tackle it year by year, and we thought we could get it done in three years. But with your support and the support of the College Foundation and the Meyer Memorial Trust, we were able to get it done in one year with only $8,800 input from the Urban Renewal Agency. So that was done in October, and the roof is holding just great, and we're really, really happy. So we're looking there at the roof. And then that center picture you see there is the old gutters that came off. They were in really bad shape. And now we have new shingles, estate gray, and new bronze gutters. The commercial kitchen project continues. We have some electrical upgrades that are due to be worked on this summer. And then, of course, we have the exhaust screen that's in progress and should be done, I would say, by the end of the calendar year. So organizationally, we've seen a growth in programs. Fiscal 2013, we had 233 events, and we recorded 26,483 people. 13% increase over 2012. We continue to provide a lot of children's programs, and we have a wonderful partnership that's just resulted in a big grant, the Studios to Schools Grant that Celeste Bay Music Festival was the lead on. We will provide outreach services and venue for many of those events that are taking place with that grant. That's a three- to five-year grant that's worth $280,000 at the end of the five years. So we foresee a really happy result for our local school kids. Classes and workshops continue to provide our mission of education. Ceramics has two new instructors downstairs, Caroline and Ben Brooks. And we also have the textiles workshop, yoga and meditation. We have the learning feast this spring. We have two kids' art workshops this summer, and we also will have two rounds of Missoula Children's Theater. So all those things are made possible by our volunteers. Our volunteer program continues to grow. We had 163 separate volunteers putting forth 5,458 hours with an estimated value of $105,000, 36% increase over 2012. Our staff stays at one full-time and, I think, four part-time. As of the end of this month, we're going to have to say goodbye to our business manager, Vicky Walling, and her husband, Hank Walling. They've been with us for the past seven years, put in a lot of dedicated service. And so if anyone happens to see them before they go, please give them our thanks because they weren't just employees, they were really central to the success of the Cultural Center. Okay, so moving forward in 2014, we plan to continue to expand our children's programs. We continue to work with our partners such as Celeste Bay Music Festival, and Let There Be Arts, and all the other nonprofits that we work with. Another strategy we have is we hope to push more activity in the summertime to the front lawn so that more people will be invited into the Cultural Center, and not just on Sundays, but also on Saturdays and Fridays, so that people can really feel welcome. Our rental revenue strategies include moving some of our performances off of the weekends so that more Saturdays and Sundays are available for rentals. We also find that these midweek shows are sometimes just as popular with our locals as the weekend shows. So we hope to have more availability on the weekends for the higher-dollar rentals like weddings and receptions and fundraisers. I have good news to report in that the entire downstairs is now rented, and we have a guitar maker who is working in the northeast, southeast corner. We have a new ceramics instructor in the ceramics studio. And then we have the textiles workshop in the old cafeteria. So when we get the commercial kitchen completed, then that's revenue coming in from all four spaces down there. We also have Celeste Bay Music Festival, which has moved into an administrative office upstairs, paying a monthly rent there as well. So that means that really there are only the two meeting rooms, the conference room and the Elizabethan room, that are in rotation. So everything else is sewn up with a purpose at a profit center. So that feels really good. We have a new rate sheet in effect that takes more into account all the amenities that we have to offer, and also the hourly wages that are required to put on the rentals. So the new rate sheet should bring us a lot more rental income as well. Okay, so we hope for steady growth, donations and memberships, complete that kitchen, and we're going to target our grant writing towards children's programs. And that's all I have for you today. I'm sorry, they're blurry. It'll look blurry on my screen.
Wonderful. Sounds positive.
It is.
That's good.
That's great.
Any questions?
Any questions on the panel?
Mr. Chairman, Nikki, John, what are the biggest challenge then is you're going towards children's programs? Is it finding a balance then between your moving programs into the weekdays? I guess I'm wondering about the coordination of weekday activities with weekend. It's a higher rental time, as I understand. But are you turning away business on weekends because you've got a program booked? Is that what's happening?
Yes, that is what's happening. It doesn't necessarily have to do with children's programs. Usually, these are adult programs that we've scheduled, a concert or a play, and it's there on the schedule for six months ahead of time or eight months ahead of time. And then someone will come in and want to do an anniversary dinner, a reception, or a wedding, and they will see that it's already booked, and they will move on to another venue. And I think that there is this really delicate balance. It's like a hotel, you know? I'm sure you all are aware of how you have to hold the higher days open for longer in the hopes that you will get the bigger business, and that's kind of what we're doing.
So that's the strategy that you're going to try for the next year or so to see if that pays off?
Yeah.
And as you pointed out, a lot of our weekend activities where the artists will come in midweek, we don't suffer in attendance. So the locals, you know, are more than willing to come midweek as well as outside visitors.
So rather than booking a concert on a Saturday night, I would try to book it on a Monday night or a Tuesday night, hook a children's program onto that, and then advertise it very well, giving locals, people, something to do on a Tuesday night. And then the Saturday that it would have normally taken would be open for rental.
Any other comments or questions? Chester Norikas.
Nikki, I noticed that fundraising in terms of revenue is 1% of the total pie.
So fundraising is -- it means, in our definitions, it means fundraising events like a gala or a rummage sale or something that's just for the fundraising, just fundraising on its own. And we get most of our income through the donations and memberships classified like that versus fundraising events. I'm sorry.
I guess I felt that that was low. I don't have anything to base that on, but could you imagine that increasing?
Yes. Part of the strategy that we are trying to employ is to bring in a signature fundraiser that would provide something in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $15,000 a year. But we don't have that figured out just yet. So we really hope that that's in our future, but we don't have it in the budget yet.
And the performing arts slice of the sources of revenue, is that ticket sales?
Yes.
And a little bit of income from selling concessions and beer and wine concessions.
And supportive grants. So if we get a grant that supports artist fees, then that goes into the income for the -- well, it wouldn't show both in grants and in income, but that's how our performing arts gets stabilized.
And I don't see workshops. It doesn't have a piece of the pie. Is that a miniscule sort of revenue?
Workshops and classes, yes. And the rental--
Yes, it is miniscule.
Yes. Yeah, we don't make very much money on classes and workshops. The income that outside instructors bring in, for example Ballet and Dance of Lincoln City, that shows as rental income versus class income because we charge her -- she receives her money for her classes, and we take the percentage as rent. So it shows in rental income rather than classes. The classes and workshops income is just the ones that we put on.
And any progress on the vent, disguising the vent?
Yes, yes, actually. Right after this, I'm going to the Public Art Special Meeting and going to get their input on the design, two designs that I put before them, and to get their final commitment on the $3,000 portion from Public Art. And once that's done, then we will be able to come back to see you, hopefully on the 23rd or at the next meeting, and show you what we have in mind.
Okay, great. And is a hard copy available of your PowerPoint?
Certainly could be.
And I'd appreciate one.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I sent it over, and it looks good on the screen, but it's not looking good on--
Thank you.
Sorry.
Any other questions? Gary?
Mr. Chair. I maybe shouldn't think of it this way, but, you know, relative to fundraising, I kind of think of grants as raising funds also.
It is a matter of categories.
Fundraising up to almost 40%.
Yes.
From the IRS point of view, and our tax returns, they very much focus on fundraising, you know, whether it's telemarketing, whether it's a gala event or an art event or whatever. So we have to report it separately from grants.
I'll make sure to do that.
The accounting and tax people.
Well, and then the figures in 2010, 2011, all of the things that we did were classified as fundraisers. So all the programs that we put on, whether they were concerts or theater or Missoula Children's Theater, anything that we did was classified as a fundraiser. So one of the things that John and I worked on is to try to make this budget more specific, to show all the program areas, the things that we do, what they cost and what they bring in. And that made fundraisers go way down, but it doesn't reflect the amount of activity that we did. It just reflects the fact that we chose to account for them in a different way.
And report them.
Yeah. So now we can really see which kinds of programs can make money and which kinds must be supported by the operation.
Creative accounting, right?
Well, I guess so, but it makes more sense when you have to manage it.
That's right.
Well, from tax, you'll see as we report, we think our mission is in five program areas: performing arts, the art galleries, classes at the gift shop, and those are our primary, and now community events. We're getting more into those that fall in those categories. So when we report our revenues of incomes from those, we say to fulfill our mission, those are our program service areas. Fundraising, donations and membership are from peoples and companies. Grants are from foundations. And then fundraising is, you know, a gala, a telemarketing campaign, the types of things. And the federal government wants you to report what they call fundraising separately because there's a lot of mischief out in the marketplace with, you know, not much money going to the mission of the nonprofit. So from accounting definitions, you know, that's how we break it out. And it shifted over the years to make it a little more concise.
It's always been-- pardon.
One more question, please. You had an official accounting review. That turned out well, I presume?
Yes, and those copies are available at the Cultural Center. I encourage you to come pick one up if you would like one.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a point, as I was making notes from Nikki and John's talk, to me, the Cultural Center has made the changes that we had hoped they would. You know, I'm hearing, you know, programs are up, attendance is hugely up, volunteer hours are extraordinary as far as people willing to put in time and enjoy. And two, memberships are up, which tells me, you know, community are not only attending programs but willing to put some money up front to help sustain. And, you know, I'm a little chagrined that it wasn't in the PowerPoint, but I know they won a very prestigious award this spring during Community Days, the Mayor's Award. And quite frankly, it was for, at least in my four years, the turnaround that this organization has made. And I'd like to publicly again compliment that because it's not easy to do when you've done an excellent job. And just even this presentation hears and sounds so much better. You know what's going on, what's working, what's not, and you've adjusted along the way. And I hear nothing positive, or I hear nothing negative, all positive, from the community when it comes to the community center's activities and its place for visitors as well to gather. So, well done.
Well, thank you.
We thank you again for the award. It was quite a surprise that shot.
Well, it's clear that the director and the board of directors are on the right track in doing what we had hoped would take place. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we were just talking today, John and I, about the importance of being able to plan long-term. And I think that the faith that you've shown in the Cultural Center in the last two years has enabled us to really start to plan and to really see how the finances are going to work in the next two, three years. So it's your credit as well that we're kind of working toward the same goal now.
Long-range planning is important.
Yeah.
We both had the same high bar some years ago, and we've made a lot of progress since then.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
You bet.
And please feel free to give me a call at the office if you have any other questions.
All right. The next item on the agenda, we're running kind of short of time here. We've got about 20, a little over 20 minutes until we're through here. We'll rush this through as we can. Kurt Olson, a Public Works Sidewalk Project Review.
Yes. When Nikki hit that odd thing on the slide, it caused the PowerPoint to go off. There we go. And so that's, I thought that might have been why it was a little blurry, but it still looks a little blurry, doesn't it? So I'm here to talk to you about the Public Works Sidewalk Project. Lila developed a cough when she speaks this afternoon, and so she asked if I would present this. But I think she's here to answer your questions, if you do have questions that I can't answer, though. So in the City and Urban Renewals continuing effort to address the gaps in the Highway 101 sidewalk system, Public Works is proposing to construct 325-foot of sidewalk beginning with an accessible ramp at the intersection of Southwest 19th, which is in the slide that you see here. And then it would run north from that across the frontage of Bonita Plaza, which is those buildings and businesses, and across the frontage of Orsborne's Powersaw, and then connect to the sidewalk that's currently in place in front of North Lincoln Sanitary. And at that point, there would be a new bus shelter placed there. The reason, well, the need for providing a safe and a new location for the Link Bus Stop and Shelter really brought this project off the drawing board and up for, you know, now is the time to get it done. Before this, the bus stopped someplace there along the street, and it wasn't safe. There really wasn't any place for people to wait for the bus. So, and so there was a thought of, well, putting a bus shelter there. The bus driver suggested that it'd be nice to get a little bit further away from that intersection. So Orsborne's Powersaw really stepped up to allow that to happen basically on their property. And so that's how this project came forward. Also, the affected property owners have provided the necessary easements for which we are eternally grateful. It's always appreciative when they step up. And, you know, it's not easy to say yes, that, yeah, you can, you know, give up your land for a public sidewalk or a structure of some sort. So obviously, they saw the value in it and stepped up and gave Public Works those easements. Public Works advertised for the project. They received two bids. The low bid was $80,879.65, and it was submitted by Devil's Lake Rock. Staff recommends that the agency approves the award of a bid to Devil's Lake Rock Company for construction services for the Highway 101 Orsborne-Bonita Plaza sidewalk improvement project. By approving the resolution, you are 2014-08 later in tonight's agenda. We'll answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions?
Kurt, just a question. As Sustainability Committee, and you reviewed or weighed in on this as all, and I was thinking specifically the bike pedestrian plan, how this fits in with them?
Yeah, you know, one of the things that we continue to work on probably more than any place else in town is the sidewalks on Highway 101 and the importance of those, at least getting something on one side. And so this is definitely in line with that. And like I said, it butts up to an existing sidewalk that was placed, put in years before.
Any other questions? Okay. Let's go on to the next item, the Urban Renewal Budget of 2014-15. We can just go ahead and do the public hearing, I think, rather than duplicate the report and what have you.
Sure.
So I'm going to open the public hearing to receive citizen comments on proposed Urban Renewal Agency budget. Are there any comments from citizens present? Don't see any. How about agencies? None? Olson, how about the staff report?
Staff report, okay. The Urban Renewal Plan, which is called the Year 2000 Development Plan, outlines 18 project categories in four general areas. And it indicates about how much is going to be spent in each of those areas. They include Public Works Infrastructure, which is about 58% of our budget, the visitor facilities and parks, 20%, property development, 15%, and property rehabilitation, about 7%. And then in 2009, we added to that plan economic development, as you know. Beginning in 1998, the agency initiated the Community Input-Based Comprehensive Redevelopment Programs that we refer to as the String of Pearls. And that was to address the specific needs in each of the historic business districts. The agency is now entering a new phase of redevelopment, completing projects identified in the community vision plans, and also taking on some new infrastructure projects in the north end of the city. For the benefit of our viewing audience, I'd like to mention that this budget discussion follows the Budget Committee meeting that took place on May 5th. The Budget Committee is comprised of this body as well as seven members of the community. My comments this evening will be somewhat abbreviated from the comments that were made in that meeting, but I would encourage anyone to get more information by going to the website and looking up the May 5th Urban Renewal Budget Meeting. And they can see that live, or they can see that on their screen. And that might answer a lot of questions that they may have. And so that's available at www.lincolncity.org. So with regard to the budget, in materials and services, the larger expenses in this section of the budget are the reimbursements for the City General Fund and the Lincoln Square Support Fund for the support of the services they provide the agency, and also for the Americans with Disability Act planning and compliance. for the Americans with Disabilities Act Planning and Compliance line item in that budget item. The rest of it is like it indicates, basically, materials and services for operations. On page three of the budget is the capital outlay portion, this is the section of the budget where the projects are found. At the Budget Committee meeting, there was a question that arose, could you get the screen back? There was a question that arose about which projects have, on the list that are shown in the budget, have been authorized and approved, and which ones are, have been discussed but not actually approved, and then which ones that you may be seeing for the first time. So I took the liberty of taking, going through the budget and listing all of the projects that were in the budget. And then you can see there, I've identified the ones that I believe are authorized, and the ones we've discussed before, and the ones that have been, are being presented for the first time. So I didn't intend to actually, to go through the list and talk about all of them, but I'd be more than happy to talk about, to talk to you about them, but it gives you an idea of how many have been authorized, or how many, how many ones that you've seen before. And then there is a few in there that are kind of coming forth for the first time, so just to help out with that. There are projects identified in each of the historic business districts in this budget, as well as in Roads End. There are a number of projects that are just citywide projects, for example, Economic Development Toolbox, the Grants and Loans, the ADA Compliance Funding, and also Property Development for properties that the Urban Renewal Agency owns. We're excited at the opportunity to continue the great work of the agency, and anyone who's interested in what projects the agency has completed in the past, again, you can go online and download a copy of the booklet that we put together, or we have the booklet in our office, anybody can come by and get it free of charge. It shows all of the projects that we have completed in the 25 years of urban renewal. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and that completes my staff report.
I think what we ought to do is see if there are any public comments at this time. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And see if the panel has any questions or discussion. Anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I guess the only comment I would make is, again, the Budget Committee went through this, of which we were all part of for two different meetings, or I guess one meeting for Urban Renewal, but for the viewing public to understand that with great detail that it's already been through. The other is reminding people, as we vote tonight, again, the public is, we're not approving projects just because they're named in the budget, that, you know, there's another process that those projects would come to the agency for approval. This is the budget that just kind of identifies those funds, that they could be available for a project if it's approved.
Right, and thank you for pointing that out. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I think we will proceed to resolutions at this point. We might squeeze this in yet, it's almost 10:00. I bring, first of all, a resolution, UR 2014-07, a resolution adopting the budget.
I'd move for approval.
Second? We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, rule call, please.
Noreikis?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Agleton?
Yes.
Ellingson?
Yes.
And Sprague?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I would encourage people to go online and go through that Urban Renewal Packet. I think it really explains a lot about how and what we do with the Urban Renewal Agency. I think it's really important that sometimes, that is a little confusing to people, and that's very well spelled out in that report. We have another resolution, UR 2014-08, a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of Lincoln City approving an award of bid from Devils Lake Rock Company for construction services for the Highway 101 Orsborne-Bonita Plaza Sidewalk Improvements.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Rule call, please.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Agleton?
Yes.
Ellingson?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
And Noreikis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It carries. Okay. That's the end of our resolutions. Next item on the agenda is agency member comments. Anybody have a comment that they'd like to make? Yes, Gordy?
I have a question. We talked about putting signs on 101 showing the roads that go down to the ocean. And I was wondering where that's at, it's like there's none on 15th or before 15th or anything.
Kurt, do you want to speak to that?
There's all up on Highway 11.
Yeah. Where's the one by 15th?
Well, I don't know about 15th.
About 15th Street, but I know there's more, there's other ones besides 15th Street.
Have you seen any, any?
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of them popped up, 21st.
But have you seen at other accesses from, you know, the kind of yellow and wooden ones? Okay, so there's one.
By 15th.
But, so the question really is, it looks like there's others out, and maybe 15th got missed?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, there isn't an urban renewal project to do that, but I think there has been some progress made by the Visitor and Convention Bureau, I think, is the one who's putting up the new, the carved signs, those blue and yellow ones. And if there are other signage that would be more Public Works-type signage, then they would be, you know, interested in probably putting those types of signs up.
Actually, I think they're very attractive, and they're distinguishingly different, so it shows access, but maybe what we need to do, Kurt, you're saying that BCB has those signs that maybe-
Yeah, and I can't exactly say if they've completed that program, they seem like they've, it's been pretty comprehensive, so perhaps they've missed that one. So I'll follow up with that and check on that particular street.
Okay.
Can I put Sandy on the spot and find out if that's one that's scheduled?
Probably isn't room on the pole.
This is my first appearance in urban renewal. Actually, we hadn't planned on putting any more up. What we did was figure it out in the beginning, what the most direct accesses would be that the visitors would see, and we identified those, and Public Works put them up in as close as they could to those accesses. I don't have any problem, however, with putting one up, or any other location if you want that done.
Straight down to the water. And just like I was asking over this last meeting, how to get down, why no sign had been put up there.
I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to put it up at any other location you want to have done. Give me a list, and I'll get the sign maker to add some additional ones and find, have Public Works sign a place where they can put them up. Okay?
Thank you. They look good.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, again, just a comment, but on that last resolution we passed, it was a real pleasure to see two local organizations bidding one, and, you know, obviously, when there's two locals bid, a local is going to win the bid. And it was just nice to see that our projects are of the size, that locals can bid on them and then capture the business, so.
We like to keep the business in town. Anything else? All right, and the meeting is adjourned.